So, it sounds like while this could be really good for China, because this could be a way that they hang on to their giant market in the U.S., there are also profound risks because of this huge X-factor you're describing, you know, whether they'll be able to work with a completely different labor market or not.
Yeah, that's true, but I guess I would flip that and say the status quo has risks and the model has changed. I mean, take Walmart, the world's largest retailer. Twenty years ago, if you were a factory trying to sell a product to Walmart to put on their shelves and you weren't making it in China, they pretty much didn't want to talk to you because that was an indication that you weren't producing at the lowest possible cost. Now, if you're only relying on Chinese factories, that's the end of the meeting with Walmart. Now, they are so insistent that there'd be greater diversity of supplies that you better...
The seven o'clock session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called to order, and I will ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCourt, to please call the roll.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Volsen?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Mr. Pretti is absent tonight. Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here, and a quorum is present. I'm going to have our invocation delivered tonight by the Reverend Adam Ayers. Is he? All right, good to see you, Reverend. He's the middle school pastor of the Valley Church of God. We're delighted and honored to have you with us tonight. And following the invocation, I will lead you in the prayers of allegiance. Will you please stand before Pastor Ayers?
Please bow your heads with me as I pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you and praise you for all your many blessings. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and the honor for bearing appropriate responsibilities. I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I pray that you grant them wisdom to govern, a sense of welfare and needs of the people, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. I pray for the agenda set forth today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city. And in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
A prayer of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Second.
Thank you. Ma'am Cook, please call the roll.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volsen?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Present.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and thank you all as we come out of closed session. All right, first on the agenda is presentations and announcements, and we have none tonight. And we'll go right into our public hearings. The first public hearing is a proposal of the city of Roanoke to consider approval of the city of Roanoke's Home ARP allocation plan. Robert S. Carroll Jr., our city manager, is the contact person here. But there is no action needed on this plan tonight, and that will take place at a future council meeting. All right, well, item number two.
Mayor.
We still need to have, we need to have the public hearing. We're just not asking for any action items on that, on that first one.
And I believe we have two people ready to speak on this item.
And we also have a presentation associated with it, so if it's okay, Mayor, if we can, what we would do is we would make the presentation and then ask you to open the public hearing. There is no action required. Today, we're not expecting any action. That will come in one of the meetings in March as we work our way through it. And I can, if it's okay, Mayor, as Keith comes up, I can kind of introduce the item and then have them walk through it. So, just to sort of set the stage as to what we're doing, as we actually talked about earlier today in the meeting, we, along with a number of other communities across the country, received additional HUD dollars, basically through the American Rescue Plan Act, funneled through the home program. So, this is a program that we participate in annually that we receive funds for, but these are funds above those funds that are specifically focused on addressing, really addressing homelessness and the access to affordable housing as well. A couple of things that I would ask that kind of you keep in mind as we work our way through this is this allocation plan that is going to be discussed here is required by HUD. The template, the format, the language that's in the document that's in the packet is also required by HUD. Keith is going to put it in regular people's language so that everybody can understand it, but we had to actually, it has to be crafted in the way in which it was. This plan was put together and the recommendations were put together by the same group of stakeholders, social service providers and advocates that have over the last 10 years caused a 60% reduction in our homelessness in the community. There has been, as of recent here, as well as across the rest of the nation, an uptick in not necessarily the amount of homelessness, but certainly in the number of folks who are homeless, who are outside of shelter, who are sleeping outside. That number certainly has increased, but our overall numbers are still significantly, have been significantly lower with what they have been as well. This is also, though we're talking today, this is formally a public hearing on the allocation plan tied to the home ARP funds. You will also see in the presentation discussion of the slightly less than $5 million that we also identified in our own ARPA funds to also address homelessness and affordable housing. And ultimately, the proposal is to tie those together. And again, Keith will explain that in just a moment. The other thing I want to stress too is that this is, though significant, this is not the only proposal or the only initiative that the city has underway to address the issue of homelessness and of affordable housing. So, I want to mention a couple of those. Obviously, one of those is our regular ESG and home funding that we receive through HUD. Obviously, we'll continue to do as we have done with before. But you all also know that there are parts of our ARPA funding went to a Habitat proposal which involves the construction of a number of affordable homes, particularly in the southeast. That project is already underway. Two homes have been constructed, four additional homes are under construction currently, and there are more to follow as a part of that. There was also funding out of ARPA provided to TAP for the land bank to be able to acquire either property for construction of new homes or existing homes for rehabilitation. There have been previous regulatory reforms. Two really good examples of that are the change that was made for property that is commercially zoned, having the ability to actually develop it residentially by right. So, think, for example, of the former Sheraton Hotel and the ability to turn it into multifamily. That was done by right because of that change as a regulatory measure as well. And there are more regulatory reforms coming as well. And then finally, you all took action at your most recent meeting to make it easier for a low-income housing tax credit project to occur in the northeast. So, I just throw those out there as a few other initiatives that are underway alongside what you'll hear from Keith as well as we work through this discussion and through this proposal. And with that, I'm going to let Keith walk you through the presentation, and then we'll all be happy to answer any questions. I know there are others who helped work on this plan or who are involved in our community in addressing affordable housing that also would be available to answer questions.
Let me make sure, because I don't have this on my script. Are we entertaining any questions on this, Tony? Anybody?
You would not from, so folks will do the, Keith will do the presentation, then you'll open it up for the public hearing from anyone that's here that wants to speak on that. And then it's up to you all if you want to ask any questions of the staff or any of the other folks that have either spoken or that are available to speak. But we just don't need any action at the end.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Bob, and good evening, Mayor Lee and members of council. I'm here tonight to discuss the home ARP allocation plan that we have been working on for quite some time. We started this process back in February of last year, and we think we're about ready to take it to the home stretch. We are currently in a 30-day public comment period that does not close until February 28th. So, this public hearing is part of that public comment period. At the conclusion of that comment period, we'll come back to you in March to consider approval of the plan and authorization to submit it to HUD. Things that we'll cover tonight, we'll cover what the home ARP is, how the funds can help, what the funds can do, our consultation and public input and outreach process, our housing needs and gap analysis that are part of this allocation plan, the identified priorities for funding, allocation plan, and the combination with city ARPA funds, and the next steps in this process. As Bob mentioned earlier, the home investment, or the home ARPA funds are, were created by, out of the American Rescue Plan Act, there was $5 billion set aside to HUD to put these funds under the Home Investment Partnership Program, which is one of the three normal entitlements that we get each year. But this is, as Bob said, this is funding over and above what we normally would receive under that grant program. We have been notified that we're to receive over $2.4 million for these, with these funds, but unlike the CARES Act, this one is, takes a lot more time to prepare and develop a plan that, for use of these funds. The CARES Act was an emergency situation, obviously, but, so with the home ARP plan, HUD was very specific to, that communities had to develop a workable plan of action on how these funds would be used before the funds would be submitted. Home ARP can help those identified in the following qualified populations as beneficiaries of home ARP funds. These funds are intended to help those that are designated as homeless, which means they either do not have a habitable place to stay or they lack a fix or regular nighttime residence, or those under temporary shelter. Also, domestic violence victims and those that are fleeing domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking. Those at risk of homelessness, which are those identified by HUD as being 30% or below of area median income, and those at risk of homelessness that fall under the qualified populations. Home ARP funds can, there were four categories at which the funds could go for. One was for rental housing, for the acquisition, rehab, and destruction of affordable permanent rental housing. Tenant-based rental assistance, these are vouchers to support those that are seeking housing, oftentimes managed by the housing authority, but this would, ARPA funds could go to those programs as well. Supportive services, a broad range of services, including but not limited to housing counseling, education services, childcare, job training, transportation, financial assistance, and case management. And finally, the acquisition and development of non-congrat sheltering. And non-congrat sheltering is defined as one or more buildings that provide private units or rooms as temporary shelter. There's no lease or occupancy agreement is signed. We're very proud of the consultation outreach that occurred during this, putting this program together from about September to November. We did a variety of surveys at the public. We surveyed housing developers, surveyed service providers and city staff as well. There was also a joint meeting of the Continue of Care and the Blue Ridge Interagency Council on Homelessness that was facilitated as a result of the surveys. The COC lead participated in bi-weekly planning meetings with HUD Community Resource Staff and consultants. The public input was outstanding. It was much more than what we anticipated. We had nearly 1,400 responses to the public survey back in October, November. We made the survey available both online, but also to those hard copies for the rescue mission Ram House, the homelessness assistance team, local library branches, and the COC members as well that administer these programs. There's also a public input session held on November 15th, I believe, at the Belmont Christian Church. It was attended by about 50 folks and was rebroadcast on RV TV and streamed on YouTube. Of the resident, of the surveys we received, the... Of the resident, of the surveys we received, the, about 90% of city residents responded, that they expressed that homelessness is a very serious issue in the city. Residents are concerned about the lack of affordable housing, lack of low-barrier shelter, and lack of supportive services, especially as it relates to mental health and substance abuse. Residents often inquire about preserving or rehabilitating current housing stock. Our stakeholder input showed some challenges stemming from the lack of affordable permanent housing, which complicates the work of nonprofits that are trying to accomplish. Nonprofits are struggling with capacity, especially as, as the situation becomes worse and more people are facing eviction, and the unsheltered numbers are rising. Some of these agencies are very strapped right now, and their staff have done some amazing work out there, but it is quite a burden to, to bear at this time. The city leadership was also surveyed, identified the need for zoning reform, incentivized affordable housing development, and the not-in-my-backyard ism, or NIBI-ism that we often see in, in rezonings. Only 13% of the city staff surveyed and answered yes when asked if the city had adequate plans in place to develop affordable housing. Not that we don't, it's just we, we have gotten the word out, I think, as well as we could. Housing developer, housing developer input included two barriers to affordable housing development, as a lack of equity funding and a lack of affordable land, followed closely by, by low profit margins. It's a substantial increase for developers in receiving technical assistance, the low-income housing tax credits, or historic credits, historic tax credits. And the consensus among all groups was that the need for strategic and comprehensive affordable permanent housing development is needed in the community. We, we, we hired a outside consulting firm called the Ramsey Group out of California that worked with us last, late last year to compile information from numerous reports and data, including the RKG Associates Regional Housing Study, our point-in-time counts, Homeless Management Information System data, community engagement report through the Blue Ridge Interagency Council on Homelessness, the Virginia Tech Center for Housing Research, Virginia Eviction Reduction Pilot Program. Some of the key findings were that 1 in 5 city residents live in poverty. Projected deficit of over 3,500 affordable units for those living with extreme low income to 30% or below. There's approximately 47% of renters that are cost burdened, which means they pay over 30% of their income towards rent. Rents in the city are increasing faster than national average, with almost 15% increase in rents year, year over year. 153% increase in unsheltered homelessness since 2019. Mismatch of housing unit size and household composition, which increased the need for smaller one-to-two-bedroom units. And the lack of affordable housing units, along with the mismatch of existing units, complicate the work of nonprofit providers who continually struggle to find safe housing for their clients. Survey responses among the service providers and city administration identify top priorities as affordable permanent rental housing, while survey responses from city residents identify supportive services as the top priority for home ARP funds. ARPA funds will be used to expand the number of permanent rental housing units and supportive services provided in the community. The city will continue consultation with key stakeholders and rely on relevant data to determine what supportive services will be funded in our community. As identified among all survey groups, there's a significant need for funding to assist developers with affordable housing development. There's a 5% set aside toward nonprofit operating and 5% towards nonprofit capacity building that can be used to address these expressed needs. City anticipates the funds will aid in the development of new models for low-impact affordable permanent housing development. This chart here shows you the, the combination of the two sources of funds, from the home ARP funds and the city US Treasury ARPA funds. The allocation plan proposes $1.2 million for supportive services, where the ARPA funds will provide $862,000 toward those costs. The ARPA funds, or home ARPA, home ARP funds have $612,000 designated for development, development of six affordable permanent housing units, but we're using ARPA funds for an additional 34 units, with a total impact of 40 housing units under this program. Also mentioned the set aside for nonprofit operating and nonprofit capacity building and administrative funds used to administer the funds. Our next step, continue to receive public comment through February 28th. Within, will ask for council for approval of the home ARP allocation plan during a regular meeting in March and authorize submission to HUD. Deadline for submission of the plan to HUD is March 31st, 2023. Once the plan is submitted, HUD has 45 days to review and approve the plan. If the plan is returned to the city without approval, we will have 30 days to address the reasons why it was returned and resubmit the plan to, plan to HUD for approval. Our goal is to have RFPs developed to address the specific type of housing and the specific type of supportive services that we'll be seeking later on this year, and hopefully have awarded contracts by fall of 2023. So are there questions? Yes, yes. We're also signed up for a technical assistance, thank you, Chris. HUD is offering technical assistance for those ready to submit their plan. We're meeting with HUD on March 7th, that will be reviewing our plan, getting back in comments, so we're hopeful that that's going to help speed the process along. So we're probably looking at your March 20th meeting to come back to ask for approval of the plan.
And Keith may have already mentioned this, but just to stress again that some of the questions that have been asked that you may ask as well, which is, well, where are these homes going to be located? What kinds of homes are they? Who's going to provide the services? And we don't know the answers to those yet, because those will come through proposals. So we actually will, if, if approved by HUD, we will actually issue requests for proposals. We do know, because HUD has made it clear, that the provider of the housing will have to be different than the provider of the supportive services. So we do know that there'll be those, but these are not homes that we will be constructing or that we'll be managing the construction of. There'll be other parties that will actually do that. And then the other, the last thing I was gonna say, and I should've said it earlier as well, and especially when you see the numbers that were in the, the gap analysis and the study is obviously as significant as this is and the other projects that we have, as you can tell, unless the state and/or federal government and the private sector really become deeply involved in the provision of this kind of housing, it will not get solved. We are, a locality is not going to address 4,000 units. And so we'll do our part of it, but the reality is, these larger issues require really the way we provide all of our housing, which is a market response, and the support of, the continued support of the state and federal government as we advances on these as well.
All right, we're gonna open the public hearing up, Ms. Vincenzo. Are there people signed, signed up?
Yes.
All right. If you call them in order of this, of their signing.
All right. The first two speakers are Kevin Berry and Phoenix Casey.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and members of council. My name is Kevin Berry. I'm the Director of Communications at the Rescue Mission of Roanoke. I live at 401 Campbell Avenue Southwest, Roanoke, Virginia. I'd like to start off first by saying thank you to each one of you on city council, staff of our city government, nonprofit community leaders and everyday citizens who have remained committed to this process of finding solutions to housing and homelessness in our region. The Rescue Mission applauds work being done on affordable housing, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, and supportive services as, that work for all of those who struggle to find housing in our region. We understand the importance of robust housing options in Roanoke, and how a lack of housing can lead to a rise in the number of individuals and families who have to rely on services at the Rescue Mission of Roanoke. The Rescue Mission's mission is simple. Helping hurting people in Jesus's name is not just a mission statement, but it guides everything that we do on a daily basis. We offer a wide range of services at the Rescue Mission, from emergency shelter to three-day meal dining, free medical care, sub-recovery services, job skills training, guest after-care support services, and I could keep going. But our services are tailored to each individual who comes to the Rescue Mission for assistance, and we're dedicated to providing services to all who come to the Rescue Mission, regardless of their background, faith, sexual orientation, and gender identity. We know that the safest place for individuals to be is inside and not sleeping on the street. We are well aware of the rise in the number of individuals who are sleeping outside, and we work every day to correct that issue by lowering barriers. To meet demand for services, as I just mentioned, we've lowered barriers, knowing that this saves lives, and it shows critically needed compassion to those who are hurting. We've seen an increase in individuals and families seeking services at the Rescue Mission over the past year. Last night alone, we had 243 men, women, and children that were staying with us. In these numbers, we see 243 opportunities for another night of safe shelter. We see 243 opportunities for quality medical care. We see 243 opportunities for a good meal, and most importantly, in these numbers, we see 243 opportunities to find housing. We're committed to providing supportive services that will prepare these individuals and families for long-term housing, and we are committed to supporting this community in its critical task of creating housing for all in this great city. We are confident that as we work with our city government, our nonprofit partners, and hard-working community leaders, that proposed solutions will become flourishing creations. We know that conversations here tonight will become commitments for the future, and we are excited to stand arm-in-arm with those who are working for a better tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Phoenix Casey.
Hello, Mayor Lee and city council. My name is Phoenix Casey, and I am currently homeless in Roanoke City. All of you know me as an advocate, as a consultant, a grant writer, an artist, and an activist for the people, as well as an educator. I am a survivor of a recent gang violence, gun violence, and trafficking attempt, as well as racial violence, which caused me to lose my home and my car and not be able to function, to be able to do the things that you've seen me do in the city that I love so much. At first, I felt betrayed, then I was angry, but as I want to do, I'm very curious as a published author, and I love to investigate, and I went to work, and I started investigating and asking questions and researching. And what I found is that it is not a lack of trying. And so first, I want to congratulate city council on this plan. I want to thank you for listening, because when I came and spoke to you about the unhoused population, I made this suggestion, and you took it seriously, and you made it happen. And now we have a bunch of amazing things happening, and I've been looking at the website, and I just want to say thank you for everything you're doing, because you are working extraordinarily hard. And it is not because our city council isn't working hard, and it's not because the organizations aren't working hard. The organizations that support the unhoused population are overwhelmed, understaffed, and underfunded. The Trust House was just shut down. We are about to see an influx of homelessness to the Rescue Mission like we've never seen before. We also have an issue with trafficking, and what I found when I started speaking to my peers is that a majority of my peers that I see that are functioning in ways that people do not understand on the streets are trafficking survivors and survivors of severe levels of trauma that Roanoke is not equipped for. Our city is growing at a rapid rate. We are developing tourism and sources of commerce we haven't seen before. We're, we're launching businesses, and along with big city, big city expansion comes big city problems, and that's what we're seeing. So the suggestion I have for some of these funds would be skill builders, in addition to the case managers, that would be allowed to help the survivors to be able to remain housed and encourage stability. I'm also gonna, gonna suggest a shelter for racial violence, which does not exist. And although we've done a lot of work, racial equity is still within our grasp, but we have so much more work to do within our organizations, within our schools, and within our communities. And no one has any shelter from racial violence, which is what I experienced. I also would suggest that there would be a shelter for people who are experiencing gang and gun violence and violence that's based in underground economics, because there is a lot of activity where people are coping with the pandemic by engaging in forms of underground economics that are harming the community. And if we don't provide safe shelter for those individuals, we cannot break the cycle of coerced illegal activity as well as human trafficking. I'm also going to ask that you utilize and expand the funding of existing violence interruption services and mediation services in cooperation with Roanoke City Police Department. And I also would like free trauma-informed services that include community building, art, wellness, mental health skill building, safety education, and domestic violence and sexual assault prevention support, and referrals to existing services. I'm also going to encourage that all the organizations that are in place pursue racial equity and all sorts of the different types of education, because we have a lack of education. It's not that people don't care, the people of Roanoke have a huge heart, it's that we just need some more education, and I want to encourage every organization and the city to work hand-in-hand. We can make the city beautiful if we work together. Thank you.
Let me ask you a question, ma'am. These things, racial violence happened to you, are you, did that happen here in Roanoke?
Absolutely, sir. There was an act of racial violence against me. I will not name the people, because unfortunately, I was slapped with a cease and desist while I was pursuing justice, and unfortunately, there were people who were in power in the situation who became complicit in the, the racial violence. And then when I called for help, I experienced an act of racism that was extreme and alarming. The city is aware of that. The city did take care of it, as well as the medical organization that was in charge of the people dispatched to the call. But because of the trauma and because I was so severely affected, I wasn't able to do my job as a grant writer, a consultant, or, you know, I used to do lift and DoorDash. I couldn't go to work. I already have a disability of PTSD from severe racial violence from some pretty big, large organizations that we would consider white supremacist terrorists in my past. I also come from a background of being surrounded by gang and gun violence. And so when these things happened to me, it was very hard to function, and that's what I want the city to know most of all, is that when you see people falling apart in the streets, when you see people that are high on various different, you know, things to cope, or they're, they're drunk, or things like that, these people are trying their best to cope in impossible situations. And we have so many beautiful services in place, but when you're in crisis like that, it is very hard without a massive, huge support network. And I am thankful to the city, and I'm thankful to every one of my friends that are throughout the various organizations and people I've worked with, because y'all have been there for me in a way that brought this idea to my attention, and that is the fact that we have the resources. It's all here, we just have to come together. And I, I would like more trauma-informed education, because sometimes people don't know how to recognize these kinds of traumas. And the high level of trauma we're stepping into, you can read about in "The Body Keeps the Score" by Bessel van der Kolk. And it talks about how when you reach a certain level of trauma, your body begins to take over and it shows up in your physical body, in things that can be like trauma seizures, high blood pressure, some people can even go into cardiac arrest. I have a rare disability from severe trauma in my brain, and when trauma reaches a certain point, it actually causes brain damage. And so some of the trafficking survivors are not cognizant enough or even conscious enough to be able to leverage the services, and that's why we're not seeing any movement, and that's why we're seeing these people continue to be victimized. And often, the predators lurk in places that they know that people are going to be vulnerable, and we have to band together as a community, because if we can support the victims, we can end the cycle, because it's really hard to victimize somebody who has a team of people in the city and in the constituency behind them. And that is how we get rid of these traffickers, through healing, through love, and through community. Because just as Martin Luther King Jr. said, "You cannot answer, answer hate with hate. You can't cure hate with hate, only love." Only love does that." And thank you for asking.
Okay. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Virginia Sweet and Dani Clausen.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and Vice Mayor Cobb and members of the council. My name is Virginia Sweet. I live on Lakewood Drive Southwest, and my zip code is 24015. I am speaking on behalf of Church Women United in the Roanoke Valley. We are 100 members strong, and we are here tonight to say thank you. We applaud and commend your efforts on affordable housing. Sound like a broken record with all these other speakers as well, but we really do support your efforts in creating 40 units, 40 new units, for the lowest-income people in our city. And we know that with people who have or at the income level of 30% of the Roanoke's median income and should only be paying 30% of their income for housing, that it is a really difficult issue. And so what you're doing is absolutely wonderful. I just wish you could do 400 this year on there. These are the individuals who are preyed upon by slum lords, and I know you've been out, and some properties you think are just absolutely abandoned. There are people living in there. The roof is caved in. There's mold. There's all sorts of lead paint. There's everything that is totally unsafe and unhealthy, and yet that's their only alternative, because the rents in general are too high, or they've been evicted for non-payment, and now their only resource is the slum lord, or the streets, or the Rescue Mission. And so this has to be the number-one priority for the lowest-income people in our city. In addition, our organization supports and urges the council to pursue creating an inclusionary zoning ordinance, so that future developers will have to have a set aside of 15% to 25% or whatever is fair and reasonable for affordable housing according to that federal definition. And we want to thank you and know that we will support your efforts in whatever way we can. We volunteer with lots of different organizations, and affordable housing is really one of our main priorities. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dani Clausen. I'm the Executive Director of the Virginia Harm Reduction Coalition. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. As I begin, I just really want to give my praise and gratitude to Hope Browning and Keith Holland. They have worked with so much diligence and intentionality around this work, creating this application, and I just can't speak highly enough of them and their offices and the way that they collaborate with service providers like myself. One of the things that, you know, a lot of really great things have been said that I agree with tonight. One of the things that I want to kind of call to attention is, in this plan, you know, the price tag is $100,000, give or take, per unit, right? Per one-to-two-bedroom unit. Now, I'm not a real estate developer. I don't pretend to be a real estate developer, but, and I, as a person that runs a small nonprofit, I am always overestimating what someone costs, because you never want to underestimate and not be able to finish the project. But I do really want to encourage the city, as they are accepting proposals, to really try and stretch that $4 million as far as they can. I live in southeast, and I live in the Morningside neighborhood. It's a lovely neighborhood. I absolutely love it. But if you go two blocks down to Bullet and Jamison, there is just house after house after house that is boarded up. So I really encourage the city to invest in these vacant properties and turn them into affordable housing. I really want to reiterate what Virginia said about code enforcement for landlords. You know, we don't want any broken-window policing here, but we do want these landlords to be held accountable for the conditions and the way that they're preying on our most vulnerable citizens. I also want to address, in this proposal, they talk about how there is a real discrepancy between vacancies, or the need for shelter and vacancies in the shelters. And part of my explanation of that, in the proposal, they say we really need to dig down and to understand why. One of the reasons I believe that is, is because there is not enough low-barrier shelter. The people that I work with, people in chaotic substance use, they refuse to use certain shelters because they do not feel safe there. They know they will be kicked out. They know they will be discriminated against. I want to reiterate the same thing with LGBTQ folk. You can have really supportive staff, but if the person next to you is bigoted and dangerous, then that doesn't matter. The policies of the agency don't matter if this physical space isn't safe. So really looking at setting aside some of these shelter beds that aren't being fully utilized, setting that aside for LGBTQ-specific and substance-use-disorder-specific beds. Lastly, I want to point in, I know we're a Dillon state. I understand that we're a Dillon role, but I really encourage this council to put together a proposal and start requiring new housing developments to set aside a certain percentage of their units. I know that takes a lot of work, and I know there's a lot of people in this city that would be willing to go the extra mile and to do the advocacy necessary to get that here, because in southeast, we have a huge development, $10 million development right down the hill from me. Would love to see some affordable housing in that. Thanks.
And our last speaker is Lauren Canary.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, City Council. Want to extend again the gratitude for you working on this issue. I'm thrilled to see that we're working on affordable housing. I'm actually a product of affordable housing. The policies that we spoke about with zoning, I grew up raised by a single mother in Maryland. In our community, every new development was required to set aside a certain percentage of housing to be affordable, and it's for that reason I was able to get a great education and be surrounded by friends from different economic backgrounds, and eventually land here for my medical training, and now own a home with my partner in southeast. We love Roanoke and really love this plan. Again, would love to see extension of more affordable housing units if possible, but I wanted to raise your attention the support for support services, specifically Ram House is a day shelter here in Roanoke, which provided almost $400,000 in aid last year to individuals to prevent homelessness. Ram House is in need of a new space. If you've been there before, you've probably seen part of the roof caving in. There's water may have leaked on your head while you were there. We could really use a new space and support from City Council and ARPA funding to do so. And I think one of the things I would love to see is that the day shelter could serve as a co-location of all these different agencies' services in one space, a way to kind of really capture folks who are most in need of these services, so that we're not going around and chasing folks across the city. I also love to see some additional utility for the use of vouchers. We know a lot of folks in Roanoke have housing vouchers and know where to use them. In other jurisdictions, I've seen city councils allow for vouchers to be used in hotels, for example, and that perhaps could cut costs for folks that are currently trying to pay out of pocket. And finally, as a person who's doing medical training here, I'd also love to see more done by Carillion, as one of the largest employers here, an investment in the community, and I hope the City Council could perhaps urge Carillion to maybe match these dollars, extend these dollars, and provide transitional housing, especially for folks that are being discharged from the hospital and facing homelessness. Finally, one more point I'd love to make, just after reading the comments to this plan, there's clear there's a lot of stigma in our community towards people that experience homelessness, and I hope that as we go forward and make plans for affordable housing, we could consider how we could change and perhaps market the work we're doing and really impact upon folks in Roanoke, the experiences of those who are living with homelessness or prior experience with homelessness, because there's a lot of work to do there to inspire compassion for our fellow neighbors. Thank you again for all the work you're doing. Thank you, Keith, for the amazing work you're doing, and I appreciate the chance to speak to you today. Thanks.
That concludes all of the...
Okay. What's your name? What's your name?
Suzanne Osborne.
Okay.
Come on up, Ms. Osborne.
Good morning. Good afternoon.
Thank you.
I would like to thank the members of, I'm going to speak about the Gun Violence Commission, and I'd like to thank the members of the Gun Violence Commission for their service. I believe we are all concerned about the escalating violence we've seen over the last decade. My comments concern the handling of the funds allocated to the commission and the seemingly lack of accountability, the most recent being $10,000 of $32,000 that was allocated to Eddie Smart with Better Agreement, which was paid in advance to train 100 people in conflict resolution to de-escalate gun violence. I think that this should be reported to the Federal Inspector General's Office of the agency involved for the directions of these funds, or how to proceed, or to the Attorney General's Office, as this indicates a serious lack of oversight by the members of the Gun Violence Commission. I understand the agreement was issued in 2021, and as of today, there's been no progress on this endeavor, any measurable progress. Our citizens, us, we would like to know why, and how does the Gun Violence Commission and the council propose to recover this $10,000? I have some thoughts on that, but I doubt anybody would agree with them. It is concerning that the commission approved such an expenditure to be paid upfront. I mean, who does that? It seems there's a lot of money being tossed around with no measurable results. The crime rate certainly has not declined, and the latest expenditure, $25,000 for a talent show, does not address the young people who are already involved in criminal activity right now. Any monetary rewards associated with this talent show is not likely to impress current gang members, as they can walk down the street to the corner and make twice as much money in a drug deal. It is of grave concern that the Gun Violence Commission has no one on it with law enforcement background and legal expertise, and that there are a number of commission members who do not even live in the city. Now, one would think that city residents have more of a vested interest in addressing these issues than those from other localities. Some years ago, there was an effort led by Chris Perkins and Sam Rowan that involved a panel of local neighborhood leaders, you probably remember that, Sherman, police clergy, and recently released former members of the drug trade, who met with at-risk youth and their parents and explained why life of crime does not pay. Reducing crime must involve not only law enforcement. It must engage the parents and the community. So maybe the Gun Violence Commission could reach out to Perkins and Rowan and invite them to share their experience and the data on this approach. And I have copies for everybody. I'd like to carve the record. Or the on paper.
Just give them the card, please.
You don't need one for everyone?
Yes, I'll just pass them along. Okay. Yes.
All right. That ends the public hearing with regards to the pool of the home allocation plan. So I'm going to close this public hearing, and I'm going to come.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
You'll get your change.
I'm out of order. Go ahead.
Okay. You get your change. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm now going to come to my colleagues on council to see if they have any concerns, and I'm going to recognize counsel in Boston.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Getting used to the process.
All right.
I thank everybody who's come and talked about affordable housing. We know that that's a huge problem in our city and something that we're all very cognizant of and working on. One of the things that I saw in this ARPA plan was, that was brought up multiple times, was non-congregate shelters as a priority, and we talk about how many unhoused folks there are currently. So I guess my main question is, you know, is it worth it for us to be spending $100,000 per unit on 40 units, which is literally, you know, 1% of the need, or using some of that money to start building a non-congregate shelters for those that are more immediately in need right now? You know, we have 153% increase in unsheltered homelessness since 2019. These ARPA funds are made to rectify things that happened from the pandemic. So my question, I guess, to the, those that are here that are experts on this, is why would we not spend some of that money on non-congregate shelters, since it is brought up multiple times in the, in the, in the study and in the paper that I received, but we don't have anything for it in the actual plan?
Mr. Holland, can you answer that question?
Yes. We took the, you know, we relied heavily on the surveys that we saw, and the surveys that we, we saw the most demand for was for single-unit housing. A lot of these folks that, that we're trying to reach may not function very well in larger congregate sheltering. We're hoping to maybe create some lower-density units that can be spread throughout the city as opposed to one large unit that, we're trying to deinstitutionalize the, the life of the homeless. So we're trying to create opportunities that, through smaller housing units and through supportive services, that these folks can have a better chance to, to succeed and move on with their, with their life, so.
Of the, for those units that, that we are looking to build, those are all for 30% AMI and below, correct?
Yes, sir. They would be.
Okay. So would you equate that to kind of being a non-congregate shelter room?
No, sir. That does not meet the definition of non-congregate shelter.
Because you'd have a lease and everything like that. So I guess my question still is, why don't we have anything in here for non-congregate shelters? Dani, you look like you've got some thoughts.
Council.
Ma'am?
You want to call her?
Can I call Dani up really quickly?
Yeah. Okay.
Go ahead.
I very much think this is a yes-and situation. Like I said, Keith and Hope have done such good work communicating, and our most immediate need is we have so many people that are eligible for housing that we could get them into an apartment tomorrow and get them back on track to healthy, independent life, but we have nowhere to put them. And so, you know, in the proposal, they recognize that, that non-congregant housing is very important and that we need to work on that as a city, but as Bob Cowell said, it's a drop in the bucket, but it's a step in the right direction, and by doing this, that then can give us avenues to other sources of funding by saying, hey, the city has already put $4 million towards this. Help us close that gap, right? So I think non-congregant shelter is important. We also need to do that, and this is a good plan.
One of the other things that you spoke about was LGBT sheltering. I know that that's an issue that we run into. As the head of diversity center, I know we've run into that issue with the Rescue Mission and others that has changed and very much improved, but there's still issues when it comes to gender identity and those types of things. So I guess that's another item that I would want to kind of see in this plan, is how do we start to build some of those, those needs in, which is again where the non-congregate shelter, I think, comes in.
Yeah, I absolutely would agree. In the plan, it identifies people with mental health issues, veterans, and currently unsheltered as, as the primary target. I would absolutely support having LGBTQ identified individuals as part of that preferential or targeted group, because so many of my clients are on the street. Like, I have participants that will go and sit up all night at the ER rather than go to a shelter, because they feel so unsafe in that shelter. And again, it doesn't matter how supportive the staff are and how good the policies. I know Joe Cobb in particular has really worked hard with the Rescue Mission to improve their policies, you as well, but if the congregate setting isn't safe, they're, they're not going to go there. And so I absolutely would support focused housing for LGBT individuals that is earmarked for them, rooms and areas that are earmarked just for them.
Thank you.
Keith, if it's okay, can I, I just want to make sure, check with Keith, because I know we've...
Yeah. I had another question for him, too.
Yeah, and we, because we, I know I've identified in the plan, and I want to make sure everybody understands this, because this has come up in some of our other conversations, that we're, we are in effect saying that the housing that we're talking about building would be given priority to, and it's got that list of folks, priority to folks that are already experiencing homelessness and... are already experiencing homelessness, and in fact moved to the front of the line, if you will, along with some of the others that was just read. Do we have the, do we have the ability through the allocation plan to identify any other populations as getting that, that priority, that preferences, was just-
They would have to be the, those qualified populations as defined by HUD.
Okay, and does HUD recognize any, any sort of sexual identity or any, or any other gender issues as that? I just, the only reason I'm asking is I don't want to set an expectation that we're actually not able to do, so I want to make sure that-
I'm, I'm not sure about that. I'm not sure about that.
That'll be a piece that I think we need to find out, if we're going to add to, to that list of folks that get that sort of qualified sort of status and stuff, so, thank you.
Thank you. Keith, one other question would be, you know, how long does it take for us to build out this affordable housing, when we're putting that, those units that are going to be the 30% AMI? Or do we have like, you know, Habitat for Humanity ready, chomping at the bit, or is that going to take a little bit of time?
I'm glad you brought that up. One of the points we were going to make in the way that we blended the ARPA money with the home ARPA money, the city's ARPA funds have to be designated by 2024 and spent by 2026, whereas the home ARPA monies do not have to be expended until 2030. So we're front-loading the housing and, and using as much of the ARPA monies we can to get that housing in place, and then supportive services to provide, to serve those populations can be, can be carried out over time. But your other question, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought.
What is the timeline for the, for building those units?
Oh, like I said, HUD has 45 days, once we submit the plan to approve it, between now and the time that we're ready to issue an RFP. Our, our hope is to have these funds ready by fall, but we will be working with staff and with continued outreach with developers, with support providers, to refine what we will be looking for in that RFP, and that will be a competitive application process, similar to what we do with our regular entitlement funds each year. So we've got, we've got some time to better refine. The plan that's being considered tonight is, is intentionally broad. HUD will allow us to go in and fine-tune that before we start seeking specific proposals for that type of housing or that type of services. So, you know, again, our target is to try to have, have these funds ready, have contracts underway, and really start spending money October 1st or before.
Okay. Thank you, Keith, I appreciate it, and I appreciate all your work on this, I know it's been, it'll be very impactful.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Trish.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Holland, you could, you could have a seat, I can ask my question, you can have a seat still. I, I really appreciate the plan, and, and I do want to just reiterate what Mr. Cowell said. I, I know that, you know, 4 million, it's, 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 it's all we have, and we know a lot of people, families, who need housing, and, and I, I understand what Mr. Bowleson is saying, but, but I can appreciate the fact that we are focusing on the rental housing, because we have so many families out there with children who, who, who need housing. So 34 does not seem like a lot, but for a community who is 4,000 short, it is certainly going, going to help. My question is, do you think we would be able to work with the land bank with some of this fund, or, or is that not allowed through this program?
I would hope that the land bank could help acquire property to, this problem is not going to be solved by the private sector.
Right.
So, you know, if we can, if we can find property to build on, or property to renovate through, through partners like the land bank, that's going to help us spread our money out a little bit more if-
If we are able to do that.
Yes.
Well, I know you, you're going to need to fine-tune it, but I just wanted to commend you for what you've done thus far. I, I think it's a good plan. I mean, we're working with what we have, and hopefully things will get better, but this is what we can do for now, and I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, Scott.
Thank you. Keith, thanks for that excellent report and a really good plan. Couple things about non-congregate shelters. I know during COVID, we, the Council of Community Services, Community Housing Resource Center, worked with a lot of providers to utilize local hotels as non-congregate shelter, the Ramada Inn, which is no longer, was one of those. Currently, the only hotel that has agreed to do this is, has been sold to make space for a new fire station. So I'm not aware of any other hotels that have agreed to provide non-congregate shelter in any form. So while I like the idea of utilizing hotels, we've not seen a lot of cooperation in that regard, and, and I, I can understand the factors in that. So I still have concern about non-congregate shelters. I also know that the HAT team and least of these ministries, as they're doing street outreach, even the peacemakers have done some of the street outreach in, in homeless areas, and of course, the harm reduction team and the Rescue Mission with their street outreach. We're seeing a significant increase, not only in unsheltered people, but in severe mental illness and factors that contribute to chronic homelessness, and people who are just downright mean, and nasty, and threatening. And, and I'm not sure that they're all connected, but it's the reality of what some of our folks who are working out there every day are seeing, and it's really challenging. If you're trying to provide services to somebody and somebody threatens your life for providing, you know, just offering it, that's a problem. And I don't know, they're not going to be open to shelter, but they're also creating encampments that are having a very negative impact on public health, on places that are traversed by a lot of people, and so we're spending a lot of money cleaning up these encampments that have, are contributing to public health issues, even though our street outreach teams are working to help the very people who are part of these. So it's a conundrum that is impossible to solve, and I know you've, you've taken all that into consideration. I just wanted to share that, because I think that's a side of this that a lot of people in the public are not aware of, they just want somebody to fix it. And it's not something, just like gun violence or the opioid epidemic, it's not something that's going to be fixed ever because of humankind and human behavior and how we treat each other, but there is an element to which people are trying really hard. And so I just, I wanted to reiterate that. Also, we saw in the Gun Violence Prevention Commission tonight, we were looking at a study that our artist and residents did on watersheds in the area, and how they have a direct correlation with violence, for lack of tree canopy, there's a direct correlation, and part of that also has to do with substandard housing, vacant housing, abandoned properties, negligent landlords. And we do not have consistency in our court system, and that's really where it has to happen, because I think we, we enforce at the limits or the levels we're able to enforce as a city, but when there's no accountability for negligent landlords at the court level, you might have one judge that holds everybody accountable, and another judge who lets them off. I used to own a house, house next to a slumlord, who would have people in there, holes in the floor, holes in the ceiling, never repair anything unless he could just do it to the, the minimum compliance. And so there's, there's a bigger issue at stake here that we have to advocate for, to put more teeth in the court system to hold negligent landlords accountable. So no solutions, but some observations that are very real in our community right now, and I know we're not the only community facing these, but I really commend you all for the, the plan that you've put forward. Thank you.
May I approach council, because I've been doing research-
No, ma'am, you can't, you know, you have to sign up to be recognized, you just can't get up on each issue. All right? All right, is anybody, any colleagues?
As they say, I'll be brief. The young lady that spoke earlier, so eloquently and passionate, I just want to ask that if, if staff could get with her, I wasn't sure, I didn't take down all the notes, who spoke about the shelter for racial violence and the underground violence shelters, and to utilize and expand the funding, and she mentioned some other things that I felt was worthy of having some, some conversation with staff about, so I'm hoping that, you know, she can speak with Keith, or, you know, Mr. Cowell, or someone could get with her to talk about some of those things she brought up.
And we have their contact, the contact information.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Let me just close by saying that, before we close the meeting, I agree with all my colleagues, and especially the last statement that Vice Mayor made with regards to these slum landlords. I've talked to people, and people are going into homes where rats, about as big as cats, holes in the floor, leaking in the roof, and no effort is made to repair those, and I think until we, and I think it's a problem not in the city, I mean, in this city, but I think it's not the localities, but these slum landlords have a lobby in Richmond, and you will see that those legislators rally, move against slum landlords, they got a big lobby, so it's, oh, you follow the money, you follow the money, and that's something that I think we can talk about and why we need to take action. Again, the same thing with judges. One judge will hold them to the dollar, the next judge, they walk on out, and people are having to suffer and deal with that, and I've heard a lot of that through the city, and it's a shame, it's a shame, but it's something that we're going to have to deal with on a legislative level, and I'm sorry, but that our legislative chairman, Councilman Pretty, is not here, who works as a chief of staff for Senator Edwards, but that's something that, that needs to continue, we need to continue to push, because it makes a difference, and people are trying to do what they can out there, but legislatively. And please recognize that I'm not taking anything away from the localities, we do what we can, but a lot of things are built into the law, and it's built by legislators who are lobbied by slumlords, I'm saying, but good, some good landlords, but a lot of them are slum, slumlords, and they put money in the pockets of people for campaigning for various DPs, so, but again, thank you. Now, with that being said, I'm going to close, well, the hearing has been closed, I'm going to, well, I won't do anything, no action is being taken this time. Am I right, Mr.? We'll take no action on this, and any action will take place in the future council meeting.
We expect it will be at your March 20th meeting.
March 20th council meeting, okay.
Is there any way for the public to continue to, I know this is a public, 30-day public-
Yeah, absolutely, they, they can reach out to Keith. Keith, you want to provide the way in which folks, thank you.
Yes, anyone wishing to make written comments can address them to me by email at keith.holland@ronocva.gov, or by mail to 215 Church Avenue Southwest, but the public comment period is open through 5:00 PM on February 28th. So we've had a number of comments already, but certainly would welcome these comments, and all comments received, either in writing or through this session tonight, will be included as part of the plan that will be submitted to HUD.
Thank you, Ms. Holland. Okay. All right. The next item is item number two, is a proposal of the city of Roanoke to lease an approximately 60-plus 60 plot of land located in Morningside Park along Morgan Avenue Southeast, and designate it as tax map number 4240102 to Corillian Clinic for use as an urban garden. Robert S. Cowell, our city manager, is the spokesperson, and there is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
Yes. An ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute a lease agreement between the city of Roanoke and Corillian Clinic for the lease of a 60-foot times, 60-foot by 60-foot portion of city-owned property containing 3,600 square feet, more or less, located at 917 Morgan Avenue Southeast, bearing official tax map number 4240102, commonly known as Morningside Park, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, thank you. I'm going to recognize the city manager for any comments that he may have.
The only thing I would say, Mayor, is this and the next two items are all related to the city's community garden program. This one in particular is with the Corillian Garden, the other two are with LEAP. This is just a part of our process that we go through on a regular basis to renew those leases. Thank you.
All right. Well, I'll open the public hearing and ask our clerk, are there any citizens wishing to be heard on this, Mayor?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, with that being said, I will close the public hearing, and ask my colleagues if they have any comments or questions that they'd like to ask, I'll say. Okay. All right. With that being said, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bowleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes, thank you. Item number three is a proposal of the city of Roanoke to lease an approximately 129-by-100 plot of land located at Morningside Park along Morgan Avenue Southeast, and designate it as tax map number 4240102 to Local Environmental Project Incorporated, which is LEAP, for use as a community garden, and again, Robert S. Cowell, the city manager. So there is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right. I'll ask the clerk to read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute a lease agreement between the city of Roanoke and Local Environmental Agriculture Project, Inc., for the lease of a portion of city-owned property containing 12,900 square feet, more or less, located at 917 Morgan Avenue Southeast, bearing official tax map number 4240102, commonly known as Morningside Park, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. I'll recognize the city manager, he's the same statement.
Nothing further to add.
Okay. All right, well, I'm going to open the public hearing, and Madam Clerk, are there any citizens signed to speak up?
No, sir.
All right. So with that being said, I'll close the public hearing, and ask my colleagues if they have any comments or questions. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, we're ready to call the roll.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Bowleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item number four is a proposal of the city of Roanoke to renew the lease for approximately 0.3664 acres of land located at the northeast corner of 13th Street and Cleveland Avenue Southwest, and designate it as tax map number 1220803 to Local Environment Agricultural Project Incorporated for use as a community garden. Robert S. Cowell, the city manager, is the spokesperson. There is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance, second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute a lease agreement between the city of Roanoke and Local Environmental Agriculture Project, Inc., for the lease of a portion of city-owned property containing approximately 0.3664 acres, more or less, located at the northeast corner of 13th Street Southwest and Cleveland Avenue Southwest, Roanoke, Virginia, bearing official tax map number 1220803, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title. with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. The City Manager's already made comments on these, so I will go ahead and open the public hearing and then ask if there are any citizens wishing to be heard. Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
All right. With that being said, I'll close the public hearing and ask my colleagues if they have any comments or any questions. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the ordinance passes. Thank you. All right, we're now down to item number sixteen on the agenda is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. And City Council sets this time aside, sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. Now, if deemed appropriate, matters will be deferred to the City Manager for response, recommendation, or report to the Council. I'll ask the clerk if citizens signed up, are there citizens signed up to speak?
Yes, we have about seven speakers.
Seven?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have seven speakers, so that affects the time that we allotted. I'd ask you to quickly make your points as we go through this section. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the speakers as they signed up.
All right. I have Sean Hunter.
Good evening, everyone, council, City Manager, Mayor, council members, and City Attorney. Thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to come here to speak tonight. My name is Sean Hunter. I'm the President of the Peacemakers Organization here in Roanoke. We are a anti-violence group, and we do community patrol. There is an unprecedented wave of crime and violence taking place in the black community. And black men are killing one another in unprecedented numbers. This wave of crime and violence that is sweeping our community demands immediate attention. For if it continues, we are on a path of total destruction. Statistics show that a white male has, has one chance in a hundred and eighty-six of exiting this world by means of murder. On the other side, a black male has one chance in twenty-one of exiting this world by murder. In 2022, Roanoke Police reported a total of sixty-five shootings, seventeen of which were deadly. The year prior, 2021, there were sixty-six shootings, fifteen of which were deadly. This brand-new year, 2022, we are in our second month, we have already had seven murders. Seven murders this year, and countless gun assaults. Again, according to statistics, Roanoke has the highest violent crime rate in America compared to cities of its size. In America, according to statistics, Roanoke has the highest violent crime rate in America compared to other cities its size. I want to get down to, so the Gun Commission requested some, put in a grant for some money. Five hundred thousand dollars came to this city to fight crime and violence where it is at, in the hotspots. Now, I'm gonna take y'all down a lane very quickly, but I'm gonna show you all where the money went and how it was used for political self-anализation. And I'm not just saying something from the top of my head, and I'm gonna point it out where it's at. Anyway, five hundred thousand dollars came here before it even landed here. Mr. Joe Cobb, your Vice Pres, your Vice Mayor, was out propagating, going and visiting different organizations, including me, saying, hey, sign up for this grant, we got this grant coming in. But he was doing this all around the city. If you all noticed, when they was talking about the grant money, it was massive all over the news in Roanoke. It was massive. And so anyway, when the money came in, if you look on, I got the paperwork, you all have it, if you look on the proposal sheet where the money went, as the manager said a while ago, follow the money. Anyway, what happened with the money was when the money came and the organizations that he dispersed it to, each one of them started having cookouts, which allowed Mr. Vice Mayor Joe Cobb to set up his campaign tables at every cookout. Peacemakers had him under surveillance the whole time. This is no joke. This is real. There is corruption on this City Council. And when the lady got up and spoke and everybody ignored it, didn't ask her one question, that bothered me. When they spoke about, there was an organization that got some money under a contract that nobody knew about. It's not even listed on the proposals. And only by my alert, by alerting members of City Council of what was going on, they dragged it for a long time. And everybody up here knows what I'm talking about. And this is real stuff because we are losing lives in our community, and it has to stop. We are not gonna play with the money with our lives. And this is real. And y'all have Joe Cobb, when we have a murder in our city, they don't talk to our Chief of Police. They talk to Joe Cobb, who is not law enforcement, who has no history or experience in law. But anyway, City Council is responsible. The City, City Manager is responsible. The Mayor is responsible. All of you are responsible. There was no, and still is not, no oversight whatsoever over the Gun Commission. And money was just thrown anywhere, and if you trace the money, you will see that it went to his friends.
It's well over three minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, these are facts. Yeah, we've got three minutes. If we got a whole press conference at the Peacemakers' meeting, we will do it because the truth is gonna come out. Anyway, can I ask you all, I just wanna show everybody, the public needs to see this. We're dealing with lives. Lives. I'm not gonna allow you to play with it. Lives. And you kept money away from us because you know we're real. Intentionally.
We need to conclude it.
All right, I'm gonna conclude it real quickly. I gave them, and I'm, we're gonna, this is gonna continue because this truth is gonna come out. The proposals, they got it with the money limits on it. On here very quickly, if you all will look, they got, they got programs that was a lot of money that's not even Roanoke City. They gave programs money that had nothing to do with gun violence. One of my researchers on my team said, Sean, this looks like this been a copy and paste thing. Because at the end of every proposal, they throwing a thing about gun violence and this and that. But look at the crime rates. This gun violence is due to unmet social needs. Y'all talk about it everyday housing. Unmet social needs, police allot social workers. But we're gonna continue this because I know they want me to stop, but this needs to be investigated. Anyway, to close it up, when the lady got up and spoke about better agreements that broke a contract, everybody remained quiet. Nobody told the media about this contract being breached. How did the contract even get there? Was there a bid? Because we teach conflict resolution. We would have bid it on that.
I gotta close, we got time.
But investigation, so if the media wants to do, we're gonna do a press conference, we're gonna get this truth out of here. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Fred Donaher.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and members of council. I'm Fred Donaher, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. As a fellow citizen and a Roanoke bus driver of forty-five years, I'd like to share my observations and some humble suggestions. We know that transit brings jobs. Roanoke was offered five hundred of them by Corillian in the biomedical field in 2012. They went to the Triad instead due to our transportation. Back then, we had no Amtrak or direct flights to DC. At that time, buses ran every thirty minutes during peak times. That was not enough for them. We turned down five hundred good-paying jobs by not being ready. Fast forward to today, we have Amtrak again. We have a direct flight to and from Dulles. Once you get there, the metro finally gives you a one-seat ride into the city on the Silver Line. Meanwhile, back in Roanoke, our bus service has decreased. Once the pandemic and a driver shortage set in, those peak buses went away. Buses now only run once an hour, and the driver shortage still affects them. On a personal note, yesterday, a Valley Metro supervisor was driving the trolley I rode because no one else was available. This is an example of why their staff needs competitive wages and benefits. They need incentive if they're gonna show up. Transit is a choice. It should be a viable option for everyone. I am blessed to have a car. And I chose to ride, I chose to ride the bus today to save gas and reduce my carbon footprint. But I'm an anomaly. Not everyone in Roanoke has a Dodge Dart in their driveway. Many Valley Metro users are captive riders. They can't afford a car. They don't have a driver's license. Some are elderly or disabled, with no other way to go shopping, get to work, or make doctor's appointments. Not all of our bus stops are in a convenient distance. Very few have shelters, and many aren't ADA compliant. That hurts the rider experience, and they're excited to go anywhere. Salem has a courtesy bench at most of their bus stops. We should do better for our city, too. One of the slogans of my fellow colleagues, who you'll hear from shortly, we share that a great city deserves great transit. Roanoke is a great city, and I believe that. I know by experience that transit attracts visitors and workers. When I visit another city, I travel in their local system whenever possible. When I visited a friend in DC several years ago, we took a Metro Bus to a nice mom-and-pop restaurant near Duke Ellington Bridge. I'll never forget that first taste of mumbo sauce. Imagine if someone went to Hotel Roanoke on the smart way to try the peanut soup. Transit makes memories. It creates community, it brings jobs, and it gets people to them. We should invest more in all of the above. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Hi. I have stood before you all once before, almost exactly a year ago, and I am proud to announce that in that year, I have graduated college. Before, I was a college student of Roanoke, and now I am a resident of Roanoke. I have moved here along with my roommate, and we both now work for the city. She works in education, and I work in social services. And we enjoy being here. However, I am here today, not as a resident, or a worker, or a citizen. I am here today as a reminder. I spoke at your last budget meeting about why public transit is important. I listed the externalities that cause it to invigorate communities. I talked about the benefits it had for people like me who don't have a driver's license and the benefits for people who do. I am here to talk about what public transit is and what it is not. Our, part of our goal as the Bus Riders in Roanoke advocacy group is to change the image of transit. Many people think transit is a business because it charges fares. And it is not, or at least it shouldn't be. Many people think that transit is welfare, something to be used by the poorest people when they need it and abandoned when they are on their feet. It is not. Public transit is infrastructure, and I hope that you all will remember that when we are going forward. Thank you.
The next speaker is Laura Hartman.
Good evening. My name is Laura Hartman. As I'm sure you've noticed, the bus riders are back again. We're here to remind you once again that buses are important, and buses are for everyone. We do want to share our excitement and our gratitude for the Bus Operators Union contract that got approved recently. We hope that this will alleviate the driver shortage and allow Valley Metro to reinstate more frequent service. We recently had a guest speaker from Richmond, and he kept using the word freedom to talk about transit. And he paired it with the word frequency. He said, frequency is freedom. The more frequent the bus is, the freer you are to choose to take it. We really believe that buses are for everyone. But if, if we, if you personally think that buses are not for you, why not? What would it take for that bus to be for you? Probably better service, more frequent service. We're also celebrating Black History Month this month, and so I wanted to emphasize the fact that transit is very important in, in our history as a nation and our history as a city. Most people are familiar with Ms. Rosa Parks, who made history in Montgomery, Alabama in nineteen fifty-five, when her sit-in on the bus sparked the bus riders boycott. But what we might not all be aware of is that someone did this before her, someone in Roanoke. Her name was Ms. Margie Jumper, and in nineteen forty-six, she was riding on a streetcar and was asked to move for a white passenger and refused to do so. She was removed, she was forcibly removed from that streetcar when it got very close to here over on Campbell Avenue next to this building, and she was arrested. So that was nine years before Rosa Parks took her stand on that bus in Alabama. Both of them agree that buses are, or should be, for everyone, right? Rosa Parks believed that, Margie Jumper believed that. We also believe that buses should be for everyone. We also heard a lot tonight about our residents who live in poverty. So I wanted to mention, not only do one in five city residents live in poverty, a full thirteen percent of our residents don't own a car. But even those who do own cars benefit from a really good bus service. Did you know that AAA estimates that the cost of owning a car is ten thousand dollars per year? Ten thousand dollars per year. So we want our housing to be affordable, but what about our transportation? If we, if we have a viable option that works for everyone, where you don't have to own a car to get to work, to get to the grocery store, to get to your medical appointments, to get to your social engagements, if you have genuine options besides driving, that would make this city better for everyone. We believe that a great city deserves great transit, and we want to become that great city with that great transit. As my colleagues have mentioned, transit creates jobs. For every dollar spent on public transportation, five dollars goes back into the community that it serves. And of course, transit is good for the environment. We know that it will save, save a lot of pollution and gasoline from all of those cars. All right, I think I'm out of time. Thank you for listening and for considering transportation as you do your budget deliberations in this season. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ben Birch. Ben Birch?
He left.
Okay. And the last speaker is Thomas Robinson.
Hello, my name is Thomas Robinson, and I grew up in northwest Roanoke. And I'll speak briefly on the city's gun and gang violence. I feel like I'm somewhat qualified to speak of the violence and the methods currently in place to prevent and to stop it. I spent forty-three years in mostly maximum-security prisons, straight. I went in seventy-five, and I got out four years ago. And I've been working with Reset as a volunteer, as a paid mentor, and I've worked with some of the other people involved in it, Sean Hunter, Eddie Watkins, and William Dungy. And I think Roanoke's correctable. I think the problem's correctable. I don't see it. You know, I think there's two, two answers. One is lock him up, throw away the key, and it works. Trust me, it works. He did it in ninety, with ninety-one, eighty-seven, Crime Bill. But you ruined two generations of kids. I really and truly believe that's why. I really and truly believe that's why people are so apt to hate the police and get on the police because there's so many stories. Everybody knows somebody's doing some outrageous sentence in federal prison or state prison for selling marijuana or something like that. There's just so many, everybody, they treated everybody like they were the worst, you know? And it works, but it just destroys everything. It's what's built the mentality that we have now. We have a mentality in the street, this gun, get a gun. That's the way we resolve all, it starts when they're about 12. We've worked with all the kids, we know the ages. By the time they're 12, the mentality's there, it's what they think about. It's what happens. There's another mentality going, it's the bully mentality. And it goes across the board. There's in here, no matter where, kids, older, it's prevalent in this country. And that's what leads to all this. Little skirmishes, first time somebody's getting shot. I think the only answer, the only, it has to come from the streets. If you don't go to the streets, it's not going to happen from up here, it's not going to happen. It happens from the street. You have to have credibility, you have to communicate, you have to know how to communicate and have that credibility. You have to be able to resonate, you know? And I believe ex-convicts resonate. We've been there, done that. There's not much you can impress me when it comes to doing time or what you did. But I know that they're so apt to disconnect, they just disconnect. Everybody disconnects with accountability. But I believe that, you know, I don't really want to point fingers because I honestly believe everybody wants the same thing. But we're going about the wrong way. When we first started working with kids, we started going to all the little community centers around Roanoke, just seeing what they were doing. And you know what they want to know when we came in? Hey, what kind of grant you get? What kind of money did you get? I didn't know anything about a grant, I don't know how to write a grant. You know, we've got all these programs. I wrote a program for an orientation in the Roanoke City Jail, basically teaching inmates how to do time, you know? Tell them, hey, that first day, that's going to determine where you go when you leave here. Everything you do in jail, just give it to them raw and speaking. I had a great program. I taught the sheriff he wanted in there, I mean, he was big on it. They say, hey, get us a budget. What do I know about a budget? I spent 43 years, I don't know anything about a budget? I don't know what, I mean, I had to learn everything all over again. So, you know, I'm trying to get somebody help with the budget. I called Mr. Cobb, who I spoken to. I said, Mr. Cobb, I need some help on the budget. Well, why don't you go to the Gun and Gang Prevention Chairman, Chris Roberts? I've been working with Chris. Well, I'd already talked to Chris, and it just seemed like everything was put off, put off, put off, put off. Nobody wants to go in the street, that's the truth. Nobody wants to go in the street, but we'll go in the street. We're going, it ain't about money with us. It's not. You know, it's about, I know where it works. I know, I ran every prison I was in for the last 30 years. I know about accountability. I know when you explain accountability, they have to understand accountability. They have to understand you can't just pretend it ain't there and it's not going to happen because it's going to happen. But nobody wants to use us, you know? They want to start up here, this problem, it's not going to happen. You have to use people in the street. We have to work together. To make a long story short, my program got thrown out because Mr. Cobb, I asked Chris Roberts, what's happening here, you know? Chris gets mad because I go to Joe Cobb on. All of a sudden, I don't hear anything else. Hey, I'm going in a different direction. Got kicked to the curb, really, you know? And I spent a continuous, I've got program, we've all, we've got four or five convicts. We've got programs for re-entry guys coming out, people in jail, going into the communities, talking to the people committing the crimes. You know, if you don't do that, the only way this problem is going to get solved is in the streets. And the only reason we solve, we all work together. You know, you're going to get mad at me because I can't write a program. I guarantee there's a lot of people, and I know several other people right now can't write programs and stuff and grants and all this. And they kicked the program to the side, you know? I mean, I'm not pointing a finger at anybody, but we can work together. If you don't take everybody's opposing opinions, how you going to ever come up with a resolution? You got to listen to everybody. I don't know much about this side, but I know everything on the other side. And I believe that's where it starts, you know? I think everybody in this country listens to somebody. There's somebody everybody in this room will listen to. A seven-year-old, he may listen to another, that might be the only person that listen to another seven-year-old, but he's going to listen to that seven-year-old. If you get the people in front of, people making these mistakes, making these judgment calls, if you get them, we can stop it, we really can, we really believe this. You know, I'm not the enemy. You know, I did my time. I'm not going to take anymore, it's over with, man, let's all work together. It's not for everybody, you can't come out here and just get anybody to do this. But when you know, we've worked out here for years on this stuff, the last couple of years. You know, people know us, they know what we're about. You know, we just, everybody's got to work together, man, both sides. You know, it can't be a money thing, it can't be an industry. It's turning into an industry. It can't be that. You know, the prison system turned into an industry, it can't be that, man. It defeats everything. If those are justice system, I mean, you're just going to have repeat, it's going to be a repeat. You're never going to get out of it, man. You have to change the mentality, and we can change it in the street, but it has to start in the streets, it starts in the jails, it starts with the people coming out of prison. It's credibility. You have to have credibility. And I believe we can do that. And I'm hoping that, you know, things can change, you know? I've still got my program for the jail, and I'd like for you to look at it. I think it's an important program, but it's just, it's a start. It's an opening salary to get some credibility with the community. If you don't feel like a part of the community, why would you think you're going to do anything to help the community? That's what's wrong, nobody feel like a part of the community out here. You know, we're working with these kids, I mean, it's a whole different world than most people realize. You know, you talk about conflict resolution, when you come out of a classroom, that's what the junior high school tell you. You come out, and the first thing you do, you look down to your, see if there's any threats coming out of the other classrooms. That's what we did on prison yards. When you come out of a cell block, that's the first thing you do, you look, any threats around? These kids are doing in junior high school. It's part of their, you know, growing up, it's part of the mentality. It's not supposed to be like this, it has to change. And I believe it changes from the streets up, man. If we all work together, I think we can do it, but we got to work together, man. All this other stuff, it's got to go, you know, it's not an industry, man, you know?
Well, thank you, your time is running out, but thank you for your words.
I appreciate you hearing me, I really do. And I hope we can all turn the page, it would be better for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does that conclude all the speakers?
Yes, sir, no other speakers.
Okay. Well, there being no further business to come before the council, the council meeting is adjourned. Thank you.